All right, by my watch, just turned seven. Welcome, everybody. Thank you for joining us tonight. We will start with the pledge of allegiance. See, Tom's going to lead us.
My allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, before we get into the next item on the agenda, just a brief explanation. I hope everybody can see, and I appreciate the plaque that you're displaying in front of us. Just an explanation for those of you who did not know. Diane, she dedicated decades of service to our town in many, many different capacities. We're honored to honor her and thank her for her service. She passed away this year. I get close to getting teary-eyed whenever I talk about her because she was largely responsible for me getting involved in this town and pressured, not pressuring, pressuring is not the right word.
Persuading.
Persuading me to do it right and to get involved where help was needed and not where necessarily where I wanted to do things. So I mention it because this is a bronze plaque that we intend to install outside on the brick wall. And interestingly and wonderfully enough, it'll be the second plaque next to her first husband, Autumn, who served many, many years for our town. And so a tradition that I hope we can continue going forward. For those who care or interested, a group of very generous anonymous donors bought the plaque. So there are no taxpayer dollars involved in getting and installing a plaque. So hopefully, I don't think we have a super long agenda tonight, so those of you that are here for other items, I hope you can stay and join us in honoring Diane and thanking her family, who will be here in a little bit, and eating the cookies and coffee and so forth. All right. So the next item on the agenda is approval of our minutes from the board, a selectman meeting of January 2nd.
Move that we approve the meeting minutes of the January 2nd. Regular meeting?
Second.
Discussion? Sorry, I forgot to mention, Dr. Moffett is present, is on Zoom. So Fred, don't let me forget to let you in when we need you or when you have something to say. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, the next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from our three board meeting held on January 16th.
I move that we approve the minutes from the three board meeting on January 16th.
Second motion.
Any comments, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Sorry, anybody opposed? All right. Next item on the agenda is some appointments. We're going to do these in two steps, I think. We do have some recommended appointments for two of the Commission on Aging vacancies. Mr. Newman, you have a motion?
I move that we approve the position on the Commission on Aging, Michael Landowski and Maureen Everly.
Second.
All right, any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, next we're going to appoint and swear in Karen Richmond-Goddard. Did I say that right?
Yes, sir.
To fill a vacancy on our Board of Ed. Before we do this, so you get one last chance, are you sure you know what you're doing? All right, well, come on up. We're going to swear you in. You want to stop and take some pictures?
We need to appoint her first, don't we?
No, we do. Oh, I'm sorry.
Have a seat.
You want this job? We actually have to vote to appoint you. So I will accept the motion to appoint Karen.
Well, I will move to appoint Karen Richmond-Goddard to the Board of Education to fill a vacant position.
Second motion.
Any discussion?
Will she replace him?
To replace Whitney Sanso.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, now I'll come up and go picture. We're going to go over here. I'm going to have you stand. I can raise your right hand and repeat after me. Ready? I, Karen Richmond-Goddard.
I, Karen Richmond-Goddard.
See, you said I said it.
I said it was us.
You solemnly swear and sincerely affirm.
You solemnly swear and sincerely affirm.
As the case may be.
As the case may be.
That I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
According to law, my duties as a member of the Board of Education.
According to law, my duties as a member of the Board of Education.
For the town of Granby.
For the town of Granby.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
So help me God or upon penalty of perjury.
So help me God or upon penalty of perjury.
All right, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
You guys want to come down and get your picture taken? You've got to sign here. And then we'll get out of the way. You guys can take it. Give that to you. You're going to have to squeeze in, I think. All right.
Good mark, and Becky, Kim. There you go.
First Shirley and then that one.
One, two, three. Okay.
All right, you guys?
Thank you very much. Yeah, yeah, sure. Noah, Fiona, come on up.
You can give me one of these.
All right, I'll do one. Noah first. And then I'd like one, Fiona. Yeah, sure. Sure, okay. And then, nice.
I think you should be.
Oh, I'm not going to be behind it.
No, come on, let them do first. Oh, you want me to take it?
Or take a picture?
Yeah, that's a great idea.
One, two, three. Thank you. Want to get a picture too?
I'll take them. I'll figure out if I want to get them.
Yeah, I'll take them. One, two, three. Thank you. Thank you. Thanks so much. Much appreciated.
All right, Karen, come up to the podium.
You want me to say a few words?
Absolutely.
All right, I did prepare some words so I would not go rambling on and on and on and make sure I said what it is that I would like to say. So, good evening. The first thing I would like to do this evening is to acknowledge and express my gratitude as a citizen of Granby myself to those who willingly volunteer their time and expertise to the betterment of our town by serving on the boards of finance, selectmen, and education. It is indeed a privilege and an honor to join your ranks, and I look forward to applying my 30 years of experience as a public school educator, 14 of which were spent teaching in Granby Public Schools, representing the values and priorities of the members of this community, while supporting and furthering the work of the professional educators and staff of Granby Public Schools. It's exciting to continue my work, albeit from a very different angle, striving for what's best for the children of Granby. The Granby Public Schools has been my professional home starting in 2009 and up until this past fall. Naturally, I have the utmost respect and fondness for the teachers and staff of Granby Public Schools who work tirelessly, day in and day out, in a profession that can be as rewarding as it can be challenging. This is not an easy time in our history to be an educator. However, in Granby, there is a culture of kindness that is found throughout the town, and that kindness begins at home. This mutual respect was evident throughout the years that I taught at Granby Memorial High School, particularly when students would almost always thank their teachers as they left the classroom. As a member of the Board of Education, I will do my best to represent the citizens of Granby as we guide the work taking place in our schools, helping those who work there to continue to provide the best quality education possible for Granby's youth. I humbly thank you for this opportunity and look forward to working with you all. Thank you.
So did you have either one of my kids?
I did not. I did not. But I think Noah went to school with Gage, right? In the same class with Gage? And you and I do remember when you came in, when I was an advisor to the Bears Beacon, and Ellen Buddha and I.
Oh, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
You met with him years and years ago.
Yep, yep. Well, welcome aboard.
Well, thank you very much. It's a pleasure.
All right, yep.
Mark, before we continue, I just wanted to express our appreciation to Whitney Sanso for the time that she spent serving on our Board of Education.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Thank you for reminding us to do that. Everything's okay, I assume, with Whitney?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, let's move on then to regular business. The first item, presentation from our Commission on Aging Chair, Jean Donahue Perrin. Remember, this is part of our ongoing series to hear from our boards and commissions and community partners on what you've got going and what you see coming.
Yeah, I hope that you can hear and understand me. I came down with this through, thanks, so bear with me if you can't hear me, just let me know and I'll make a better effort. The Commission on Aging was established in 2004 with the intent that it would help to study the needs of senior citizens, to provide support for the senior center staff, and aid in the supportive programs and activities of the aging. The membership is, the commission is made up of a nine-member membership with each member serving no more than two consecutive terms. After that second, after their first two-year term, they can leave if they like, or they can ask to stay on for an additional two. After that second two-year term, they're asked to take a little bit of a hiatus of a year and come back to us if they choose to. There's been some recent discussion on changing that because of the difficulties and the effort to find replacements, so we'll be revisiting that. The commission also has three ex-officio members, meaning the first selectman, the town manager, and historically, we've had the CEO of the Farmington Valley VNA since the merger with another group, a larger group. It's been in question as to whether or not they will continue to do that, but it's been valued in the past. We meet on the second Monday of every month, although next year, pardon me, this year, there'll be October, November, it'll be the second Tuesday instead because of Columbus Day and Veterans Day. Some of the powers and duties is to serve as an advisory capacity to the Board of Selectmen and staff of the senior center and as an ombudsman to the senior center or the senior population of Granby. We are to foster understanding, respect, and involvement of older adults in the life of the community and promote senior center equal access, senior citizen equal access to town resources, facilities, and programs. We can also form some committees to work on special projects when deemed necessary. Our members, we do have officially, now that you've appointed the two people tonight, we have, we're still lacking one that I'm in the works with. She may be coming later tonight to go over issues. She couldn't be here earlier, but kind enough to be here tonight is Lynette Simpson. She is one of our newest members, serving this year, and previous president, or chair, I should say. Thank you for coming. I'm sure we all know Patty Sanso. The COA is made up of various, people with various backgrounds. We have healthcare providers, we have our end professionals, caregivers, we have an attorney, an engineer, so we've got a variety of people that really kind of meet the needs of trying to get experiences to the table. The senior center mission, which is our mission, is to empower older adults to live full, independent lives, and the senior center logo is "Meet Me at the Center." Thank you, Patty. And that can be found when you get the Granby, let me just make sure I get this right, the Discovery Granby Program, when you get to the senior section of that, you'll see the bullseye of, or "Meet Me in the Center." And I don't know if any of you get our Center Life, our newsletter, it's also on that. So that was something we did two years ago, and well-received because it's kind of a catchy phrase, and it kind of thinks, yeah, that's the place to be, "Meet Me at the Center." In 2023, our accomplishments ranged from revising the Commission on Aging mission statement, revision of the COA bylaws, revision of the membership job description, and in conjunction with the Assessors Office, updated and disseminated information on property tax exemptions and abatements and credits. We had two people on our commission that took that on, met with Sue Altieri, and revised that, and even had the energy and the interest to go to Geisler's. And as people were leaving the store, handing the pamphlet out if indeed they wanted it or informing them about the information that was in it, and we have found out from Sue later that it's, there's been an increased number of people interested in calling her office, so that was a nice success. We're currently assisting Sandy Oss, the senior center director, with revision and updating the senior center policy and procedure manual, which hadn't been done in a long time, even with our bylaws. I think it was last revised in 2016, so we're kind of bringing us up to where we want to be. You know, just a quick thing, I met Mark one day, and he said something about the senior center, I think it was when you were talking about the strategic planning. He said to me, you know, let's bring the senior center to the next level. I walked away, I was like, what does that mean? But I think we're doing it. I think we're doing things that we haven't really taken on before. So, oh, more accomplishments. We will be submitting a monthly article to The Drummer. It was supposed to happen this month, and something happened, so I haven't dug into that. I was disappointed, but starting next month, there's been COA representation on the Farmington Valley Health District, CHIP. CHIP stands for Community Health Impact Program or Improvement Program. I sit on that committee. It's been meeting about once a month since September. They did originally, the health district got together, a focus group of a lot of leaders, like from home healthcare agencies, school state cares, whatever. They came up with a list of concerns that they felt were current in all of the communities that the Farmington Valley Health District oversees. Took those items, found another group who sat down, and it's divided into healthy aging, nutrition, and mental health. So whenever we meet, there are three groups that break out. Lots of discussion, and ultimately narrowed it down to what those issues are, and they have now taken that back and have come up with goals. We, each group was tasked with narrowing it down to three goals. We meet again next Monday night, and we're pretty much coming to an end of our commitment with that. They will then implement the programs that will help meet those goals and will help establish, you know, what the programs are, but it's been very, very interesting. Just what amazed me was even on the nutritional part of things, they had, I can't remember the woman's name, but she's from the Clubhouse daycare. They had principals from one of our schools, so just a real good representation, and it's been a pleasure to work with Jennifer Cuttiness on that project. We started investigating what it would be to improve the housing options that are usually here in town, which I think is going to take a while, but there's definitely a need. It's a population of people that's fastest growing, and here in town, if you have people that are elderly who want to downsize, what we're hearing through the senior center is they might sell their home and move into one of the new apartments that are nearby, allowing them to stay in town, but they're spending their savings on those apartments, and ultimately, you know, if they're healthy enough, they're going to run out of money. So we're very interested in pursuing some information on that and seeing what we can do to help out in that area. Another thing is that, going back to CHIP, what we have found, which was a kind of resounding topic, is that people, especially elderly in town that become in need of services, don't know where to find, you know, their family members, they themselves are like, well, how can I get help? Who do I go to? And Friday, I went to a program that was run by the Department of Aging and Disability Services. What they're doing is trying to come up with their three-year strategic plan, and they had, I was at the Windsor Senior Center, they had over 100 people in the room, and again, ranging from, a large majority of it were residents of Windsor, other people, other COA members, there were healthcare agency owners and whatever, but a resounding thing was, you know, how do people get information? Where do they go? So through the Farmington Valley Health District and that, being there, it learned that people just don't know how to get information, what's available to them. So I think there's going to be an effort to really develop a hub, so to speak. There are lots of suggestions and methods for people to fix that, but that will all, I think, take place in that strategic plan. Our goals for '24, no, '22 to '24 was that we wanted to increase our participation, not our membership, but our participation, the number of people that walk through the door at the senior center by 10%. There's been difficulty with deciphering the software that is available to the senior centers. We're not quite sure yet whether we met the goal. I'm hoping we did, but I don't know yet. So we've made some changes to, when you walk through this, into the door of the senior center, the sign-in or check-in machine is to the right, and you could easily walk by it. So recently, Sandy and the staff have made some changes. There'll be a large screen with the daily activities rolling on that, and the check-in machine will be right there so that, you know, if people stop to read what's going on, it'll be an easy catch their eye and check in for whatever event they're at. For the next two years, for me, at our February meeting, when we have a full complement, we will establish our goals for the next two years. And so the future focus of the current Commission on Aging is to inform you all of the need of the increasing housing for the elderly within our community. And it doesn't even have to be like, you know, I don't know if you know, but there's only 44 units at Stony Hill, and there's 2,500 or more elderly here in town. There's a two- or three-year waiting list, so that kind of goes back to our interests, but it doesn't even have to be more of Stony Hill. It can be what is being referred to now as acceptable housing, just something smaller and affordable, and that's an area that we're going to dig into and look at what's going on. Same thing is happening in West Hartford. I talked to this guy who's got a group that are actively pursuing acceptable housing, and they're beholding a forum in April with a panel of people that are educated in the area of that, and I hope to attend that, so we'll see what the outcome is. We're also interested in developing a senior center promotional video in conjunction with either the high school or the town TV people. We're not sure.
You're sitting right at the back.
Yeah, people that have signed up. So we're, I'm working on that. Continue to represent Granby at the Community Health Improvement Plan with the Farmington Valley Health District, assist the Department of Aging and Disability Service Unit on aging, presenting draft goals and disseminate a community survey, collecting information about program support services to the elderly, and plan and carry out a Commission on Aging social program. What we think we're going to do is, we've got a date in April, we're hoping to be able to thank our volunteers, the senior center, as with all of Granby, is, you know, really supported by our volunteers. So, any questions or concerns? You want to fire me?
Fire me when it's firing me.
Any questions?
No questions for me, thank you.
Jean, I had a question about the term limits you mentioned. Do you know what the rationale was for having people resign after two-year terms?
Yeah. What happened initially is a group of generous people decided that they wanted to sit on that commission, and with that, years went by. I would say more than a decade went by before anybody left. So with the development of the bylaws, they did that so that we'd have turnover, and because we didn't want, well, a couple of things. We didn't want people to stay forever, we wanted fresh blood, fresh ideas, and, you know, if someone really wasn't participating, we wanted an exit strategy. So that's primarily it. But it is understood, I had a conversation with Mark, that perhaps our bylaws need to be amended and that, maybe keep that, and this is up for discussion, but keep that, but also just an addendum, that it's up to the discretion of the Board of Selectmen. So if someone wants to stay and they're valuable, then it would give the Board of Selectmen the right to say, let's waive that.
Thank you.
Okay?
Yep.
Anything else?
I just have a couple of things. So first of all, again, I want to thank you, everybody on your commission, the work that you're doing. You weren't kidding when, you know, we talked about, let's take it to the new level, and you guys are very creative and working very hard together to find ways to do that, and we're very grateful.
Thank you.
I, in particular, just by way of example, love the way you guys have stepped up to make sure that we're maximizing our value in groups like the Farmington Valley Health District. You know, the taxpayers help to support that, they provide a lot of resources, and you guys are on the front line to make sure that we're getting the full benefit of those. At least from my perspective, you really stepped up that effort, if there's no other way than to report to us that we know that you're doing this. And I hear you in terms of your, one of your primary goals going forward is trying to do more to make housing more affordable for our senior population.
Great.
I hear that everywhere I go. I guess my only comment would be get ready, because as we start to address that, there'll be a lot of work, I think, we will need to vet through those kind of plans, and research we'll have to do, and options and those kind of stuff. So we'll probably rely on you all for helping the process.
Perfect. Where are you, Plumwilling?
There's three of us that are like a subcommittee right now, but.
There's three of us that are like a subcommittee right now, but given the fact with the town manager situation, we're going to kind of cool our heels a little bit when you guys are ready. But we're loading our guns, we're doing some research and talking to people, so.
You can fire those guns, you don't have to wait for us to.
Oh, I just thought, you know, that's not a real nice way to put it.
You can move forward, let's say that.
Okay.
All right. Kelly?
No, no additional questions. Thank you guys for everything you do.
Thank you.
Fred?
No questions, but thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next on the agenda is a presentation from the Granby Community Fund President Patty
I don't think my voice is quite as sexy as Jean's, but.
No, no.
Thank you for, for inviting me to speak to you. As I look around the board, with the exception of Scott, I know you all are familiar with the Granby Community Fund. So to give you briefly what our mission is, it is to, through the generosity of our donors, to provide grants to local organizations for the sole purpose of sustaining a caring, healthy environment for our Granby residents. I think we can do that. So just a little background, the Granby Community Fund may be the longest-serving nonprofit in Granby. I'm not positive, but it was formed in May of 1960, which makes it almost 70 years old. And we are one of only a handful of community funds in the state, true community funds that are funded by the community and give back to the community. Originally and for many years, we solicited our residents for donations by door-to-door visits. And obviously this took a very large number of volunteers. And then we transitioned somewhere, I suspect in the late 70s or 80s, I'm not positive when it happened, that we moved to a townwide mailing, which is how we function now. We are an all-volunteer Board of Directors comprised of individuals who represent the community of Granby at large and a representative from each of the agencies that we support. Member agencies must provide a representative to serve on our Board of Directors. That's part of being a regular community fund agency. We meet monthly and that's the way the structure is. So presently we have 15 agencies. They all have to be a nonprofit, 501(c)(3) or an agency of the town. You may not, of this 15, three of them serve, are part of the town structure at the senior center, the Granby Fuel Bank, the Emergency Fuel Bank, the Senior Van, and Granby Social Services. Those are three of our agencies that we help to support their needs. Each agency is invited to apply for a grant annually. However, not every agency requests a grant each year. Over the last four years, the total annual Granby Community Fund grants have averaged over 42,000, the total of our grants for the year. And we have set our fundraising and distribution budget at about $50,000. As with many nonprofits, our income took a decline during COVID. We have, we have rebounded and we're quite comfortable that we can meet the needs of our agencies. That's what we care about most. Some of our agencies are large corporate entities, as you know, such as the Salvation Army, the Red Cross, and maybe we could even consider the YMCA that. However, it is very important to note that Granby Community Fund grants are to be used for Granby residents. Our website is up to date with a list of our agencies and our board members. You can peruse that or if you have any questions after my presentation, I'll be glad to help you. Our activities in, in 2023, generally we don't deviate much from our model of fundraising and, and donating. We raise our funds in the fall of each year, we start our campaign, and in the spring of the next year, we start our grant process. We incorporate activities of participation in the community. We have had a booth at Celebrate Granby, Celebrate the Valley for the past few years. Additionally, last year, we joined the first Community Cleanup Day at Stony Hill Village along with many other organizations and fully intend to participate when they do that event again in May. We also voted as a board to join the Granby Simsbury Chamber of Commerce in hopes of encouraging our local businesses to donate to our fundraising campaign. As a note, we had specifically stepped aside from soliciting our businesses when times were tough during the pandemic. And also of note, we completely assemble our own townwide mailing, saving the time and costs that were associated with having a printer, mail assembler do the job. Preparation of our appeal letter mailing is truly a community effort where board members as well as agency and community friends join us in the senior center on a long evening to fold, seal, address, and organize by zip code for mailing of the appeal letter the next day. We've saved, that's a significant saving. So just a little bit about our fundraising and grant process. We send our letter of appeal to the residents in the fall and start the grant process the following March. We have a committee, the Budget and Admissions Committee, that invites each agency to apply for a grant. They review each grant application and then meet with each applicant for further information and clarification. Based on the results of our completed fundraising, a budget is set for the total grants. At our May board meeting, the Budget and Admission Committee makes a recommendation to the full board of the amount, the grant amount for each agency. The board votes on the recommendations. This past year, we awarded agency grants ranging from $1,500 to a high of $11,000. We pay out our grants in June and December. We also make available, when we have the funds, special grants on a one-time basis. A couple of years ago, we made awards to the Racial Reconciliation Committee for their first Granby Celebrate Juneteenth and also to the Wildflower Meadow as, as seed money for their new project. This past year.
Did you mean that, by the way?
Beg your pardon?
Did you mean that, that you seeded their?
I did. It's sort of like me to set the center, find those. This past year, we awarded a special grant to Citizens for a Better Granby, The Drummer, to help with the increased costs for printing and postage. Subsequently, CBG The Drummer has joined the Granby Community Fund as a member agency. We consider each of our agencies to be a partner with us and we're certainly excited about The Drummer being part of that. For our 2024 focus, we will participate actively in chamber events so as to develop a more meaningful relationship with our Granby business people. I should note that we made a personal appeal to a small number of our Granby businesses this year and the response was very gratifying. We will broaden that initiative this next year. We will work with, we have a couple of our agencies that we would like to work with, for instance, the Girl Scouts, to explore ways that we can be more involved with them and thus know their needs better. Coming to the end of my presentation, and I would be remiss if I didn't mention the Hartford Foundation for Public Givings Greater Together Community Funds, which has found some momentum in Granby. When this initiative first started, we, meaning me and, and a couple of our executive board, attended the original kickoff in October of 2019 and subsequently met with Hartford Foundation leadership and its town liaisons to express our concern that its use of quote "community funds" in its name would cause confusion and possibly loss of donations to our Granby Community Fund. Now, four and a half years later, their effort is underway in Granby. Certainly there are groups in town that have needs that could benefit greatly from this level of grant. Time will tell how it affects your Granby Community Fund. And finally, I have served as co-president or president of the Granby Community Fund for six years and my eligibility, my term limits in this capacity are up at the end of the year. We will be, part of our 2024 focus will be to have a strong leadership team going forward. Do you have any questions? Do you want to know more?
You always want to know more. We'll start with.
Fred?
Dr. Moffery, yes, sir. Go ahead.
Patty, thank you for your service. They'll be sad that you have to step down. I don't have any questions, though. Thank you.
And let me clarify one thing. I, it is my intention to stay on the community fund, just not in this leadership role. For a number of years, I have served as the chairperson of the Budget and Admissions Committee and I would hope to continue in that role, but I also have served as the representative from the three town agencies. So I don't suspect Sandy Ose wants to leave me or wants me to leave her.
So you're saying you're going to have some free time on your hands that we might be able to fill?
That's what I was going to say. Thank you for your service. Just one quick question, is there a maximum that an organization can get when they request a grant or is it really kind of looked at each one individually?
It's, there's not a maximum. We don't have a maximum set. I mean, our agencies know our budget and they have to substantiate this need. Part of our application process is to, in detail, tell us how you used your grant last year and what you intend to use the grant for this year. It's a simple application, but we expect full transparency and we also ask what other grants your agency is receiving. I think that's only fair.
Yeah, that makes sense.
So, anybody else?
You don't get to skip me. Patty, you know how much I think of you and the work that you're doing in the community. Very, very grateful for it. Obviously, the community fund is, is part of the heart and soul of our town and our, our community partners. Our citizens enjoy so much, so many things that go into their quality of life that we could not provide without the help of community partners like you. And very grateful for the, the depth and breadth of your commitment and involvement in our community, not just in terms of the dollars that you spend and distribute, but also in the example you set, that structure that you just described to us is critical for us meeting our needs and for a example for other community partners to follow, and I think many of them are through yours and other leaderships. Thank you. I would ask you what we could do to help you, but I know you know where to find us. So I know you won't be shy about telling us that.
No questions, I just want to echo our gratitude for all the community fund does for the community. It's, it's so nice to know that when you make a donation that it's not all going, it's not going to overhead, you know, and some administrators and getting rich off of it and the money's going right back into the community. That's the beauty of the organization, so thank you.
No questions for me, but I'll say I admire the fact that the community fund has had such a long commitment to Granby. I know that we've appreciated it over the years. Glad that you have a Board of Directors, I'll call them, who will keep the agency energized so that it continues to go from year to year supporting this town.
Thank you, Mark.
All right. Anything else for us?
Oh, I think I'm all set.
Good, thank you.
Thank you again for inviting me.
Yep, thank you for coming. All right. The next item on the agenda is consideration and approval of use of ARPA funds for the Avaya, did I say that right? The Avaya phone system and licenses for VPN network access. So we did a very straightforward, very simple memo that explains that. Happy to answer any questions anybody has. This essentially wraps up the second phase of our IT plan that we identified in ARPA. First phase, remember, was the background infrastructure. The second phase was the phones. VPN access, I think speaks for itself, but I can happy to answer any question, I'd be happy to answer any questions anybody has. If not, I would accept the motion.
I move that the Board of Selectmen authorize and approve the additional allocation of $8,778.17 from the ARPA funds to cover the overage in the town phone system project and approve the allocation of $1,102 to purchase a bundle of 25 VPN access licenses.
Second the motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Sorry, Fred. I'll, I'll remember the pause. All right. The next item on the agenda is consideration of authorizing, an authorizing resolution for the Emergency Management Performance Grant. Unless I get this wrong, we have, this is an annual reauthorization we have to do at the pass of this resolution to continue to be eligible for the grant money that we receive. Are there any questions? I'll work to answer them. If not, I think we have to read the proposed motion in its entirety to be safe.
I'll take it. Be a resolved, be a resolved, it's kind of Granby may enter into and with and deliver to the State of Connecticut, Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection, Division of Emergency Management and Homeland Security, any and all documents that it deems to be necessary or appropriate and further to resolve that. Mark F., or Mark H. Fiorentino, as acting town manager of the town of Granby, is authorized and directed to execute and deliver any and all documents. is authorized and directed to execute and deliver any and all documentation on behalf of the town of Granby and to do and perform all acts and things which he deems to be necessary or appropriate to carry out the terms of such documents.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay. The next item on our agenda is discussion and possible action to authorize the Community Development Director to conduct an RFP for a commercial real estate broker to assist in marketing 83 Salmon Brook Street. Again, there's a memo in the backup with just a little bit of brief history. This is the former Freshy site. Just by way of background, I think I said I was going to do this, but at any rate, I did it. I made a presentation to the Development Commission at their meeting earlier in January to get their thoughts on, now that that lease has expired, what they recommended. Their concurrence was to seek a broker to help us market it. So this is really just the first step to authorize Abby to do an RFP to see if we get qualified responses. Broker would be tasked, as we've laid out in the memo, to both advise us on what options we should pursue and then to help us pursue them. Any questions? All right. I'll accept the motion.
I'll save Marcus' voice.
Thank you.
I move that the Board of Selectmen authorize the Community Development Director to conduct an RFP for a commercial real estate broker to assist in marketing 83 Salmon Brook Street.
I'll second the motion.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Going to count Fred as an aye. Anybody opposed? All right. Next item on the agenda is, let's see, outline of an initial schedule regarding discussions relating to a proposed solar generation facility at 90 Salmon Brook Street and 35 Floydville Road. Again, there's a memo in the backup giving the highlights of this. For those of you that are not familiar, maybe just a little bit of introduction. So company has bought the Monrovia site a couple of years ago. Monrovia is working down, ramping down on its operations. And the company that bought it is interested in developing a solar facility, very large solar facility, that would span both Granby and East Granby. In our backup, you can find this online, is a one-page, very, very high-level done by the company, description of who they are and their general thoughts so far. Just the very beginning of a process to begin. They're doing some community outreach. So as I understand it, the way it goes, the size of this facility is such that the town of Granby does not have any direct jurisdiction over it. The jurisdiction falls within the Connecticut Society Council. Ultimately, the town will be a party to those proceedings, but they, the Society Council ultimately makes the decisions related to it. However, this is a company that's sophisticated. This is not their first project and has expressed a real interest in working with us before they filed that application. Nothing's been filed. Get our thoughts and concerns and questions. So just a couple of things I would point out, and then I'll be prepared to answer any questions. Again, very beginning of the process, very, very high-level. What we're starting with in the action for tonight is to schedule a seven-board meeting on the 13th of February. This board, the Board of Finance, the Planning and Zoning Commission, the Inland Wetlands Commission, the Development Commission, the Conservation Commission, and the Ag Commission. Really just for purposes of them making a presentation of where they think they are, the company, and beginning to gather their thoughts and our thoughts and our concerns and questions. They've also committed to us that they will do a public session for any member of the public sometime in March. It hasn't been set yet. As soon as it's set, we will broadly advertise it through our communication system. So any interested citizen can know and go to that. Prior to that, they are committed to also setting up a website where anybody who has any questions or concerns in the public or can start to communicate with them directly and not wait for the public forum. I hope to have that website address to announce on the 13th when the boards meet. If not, it'll be shortly thereafter, and we will broadly broadcast that as well. Anybody on the board have any questions about where we're starting and where we are? All right. If not, I would accept the proposed motion.
I'll move to schedule a meeting of the Board of Selectmen on February 13th, 2024, at 7:00 PM in the Salmon Brook Park Gathering Room to receive a presentation from D.E. Shaw Regitable Investments and to invite the members of the following boards to attend the meeting. The Board of Finance, Planning and Zoning Commission, the Development Commission, the Conservation Commission, the Agricultural Commission, and the Inland Wetlands and Water Forces Commission.
So we have a motion in a second. Before we actually go on it, I wanted to make sure I made this point clear for everybody who's interested in this project and going forward. Please attend. You're welcome to attend the meeting at the, on the 13th. The public is welcome to attend. We probably won't take public input because we're contemplating that being more, done more sensibly a little bit later in the project, but please attend. We are going to try to record it. We have to do it at the Salmon Brook Park because it's the only place we can accommodate a group that large, except for the senior center, which is already booked for that night. So we're going to try to record it so the recording is available, but please come if you're interested. All right. I have the motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right. Next item on the agenda is an appointment of Kimmy Chang to serve as the interim town manager. We've done this before. Again, there's a memo in the backup describing where we are, what we're doing. Before we discuss it or I take a motion on this, I, there's a few things that I just want to share with everybody. First and foremost, I am very, very grateful for Kimmy. She is an invaluable member of our team, especially as we're working through this transition period. Kimmy has been willing to step in and help on anything and everything we ask her to do without complaint. I mean that from the bottom of our hearts, Kimmy. Thank you for everything that you're doing for us. I'm also grateful for the rest of the team because to some level, they are all doing the same thing. They're all stepping up, making sure the work of the town and the citizens get done and done as efficiently as we can. We couldn't do it without each other, and so I'm grateful for everybody's willingness to do that. I'm also grateful, if you guys haven't seen it, the backup includes a letter that I, we broadcast to the citizens describing what process we went through and where we're at. The bottom line is, it was methodical. It was thoughtful. We were meticulous in the process. We involved a lot of stakeholders in it. I'm proud of that process. I'm proud of the input that we took. We've decided to keep looking. But there are a number of the members of our team who participated in that process who were not required to do so. It's a difficult task. I want the citizens to know that, that those folks who participate in the process stepped up. We asked them to help us make some very tough decisions. And if you haven't been involved in that process, or if you have been involved in that process, you know that you don't participate in it without taking some risk. You have to be willing to ask hard questions. You have to be willing to share your honest opinions with a number of other people. And everybody on our team who we asked to do that did it, and it led us to where we are at this point. As I said in the letter, if you read it, I can tell you, it was not an easy decision. It's not one that anybody relished. I mean, the decision to keep looking. Least of all, me. But all of us who were involved are confident that it was the right one. We've worked hard in Granby to be where we're at. Frankly, we've earned the right to be super selective. What that means is we've earned the right to not choose some candidates who are qualified, to continue to look for what we think is the best fit for Granby. And we take that responsibility seriously. And I just hope that you, that the community will understand, frankly, the easiest thing for us to do would have been to pick one of the candidates. So it was not hard, but I, you have our commitment that we're going to keep doing the right thing. I will also say for myself, and I believe it to be shared by the board members, you can correct me if I'm wrong. I am mindful of the concerns that we lose some value in the decision-making process when a single person serves as both the town manager and the first selectman. I understand those concerns. Believe me, if I had a time machine and could move us back, if I knew that we would be here today, we might have made the decisions differently. I can promise you, though, that we are working as hard as we can to put as many pairs of eyes on the decision we're making as we can. We are working internally to do that. We're working externally to do that. Just by way of example, the RFP that we just discussed here, it's not an item, it's an item I could have approved. It's well within the purview of the town manager to do. I'm going to talk about in my report, a process we're going to go through with the capital planning, again, something a town manager could do on his or her own. I'm mindful of it. We're mindful of it. Believe me, I have no interest in serving as town manager any longer than is necessary to do what we collectively think is in the best interest of the town. It's not an easy decision. We've never lost sight of that in the process we just went through. We are never going to lose sight of it as we continue to go up through the process. Going to ask you to continue to be patient with us. The first step tonight, as you all know, the way the charter reads, the first selectman can only serve for 120 consecutive days. Axiom charter uses the word consecutive, I think obvious for some reason. And so I'm very grateful that Kimmy is willing to step in for a few days to reset that clock as we work towards a plan to continue our search. All right. We'll start with the board. Anybody have any questions? Anybody disagree with anything I just said?
No, I'm good.
I'm good.
Don't forget Fred.
I'll say it.
All right. Then I would accept the proposed motion.
I move that the Board of Selectmen appoint Kimmy Chang interim town manager for the period of February 6th, 2024 to February 8th, 2024.
Second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay. Next item on the agenda is our department reports. As always, the team did a very, this is another great example of some area of focus for us that I'm proud of. These reports are pretty well detailed. If anybody wants to know what's going on in the town, just go on the website and click the reports. Our team does a very good job of summarizing what they're working on. I'm only going to highlight one thing because I know there were some citizens who expressed some concern and angst over this, and then I will open it up to anybody else. So on the last page under the assessor's office report, we were, there were four lawsuits challenging our assessments in this cycle. Two of them were withdrawn because you get that far in court and the proponents realize that there's not much they can fight about, that we did, the work we were supposed to do. In particular, I will point out to people that the two Murphys Way appeal has been withdrawn. The two of the, two of the four are at least this stage going forward, but two have been withdrawn. All right. Anybody? Fred, we'll start with you. Any questions? Anybody have any questions on this?
Hold on. Just one question noted that, I believe, waste oil and antifreeze wouldn't be allowed at the EPW. Is it still allowed at the transfer station?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No.
Comments? All right. We're getting to the celebration, I promise you. It's going to be worth the wait. All right. Next item on the agenda is the first selectman of the board. I'll go quickly. Again, for those in the audience that care about this process or know someone who might, we're going to do something a little bit different, I think, in terms of our capital planning than we have done in the past. I've asked our department heads and our team members to give me, to expand their scope of what they normally look for in terms of the capital. I've asked them to give me everything on their wish list except IT matters because we're treating those differently under the ARPA plan for the next 10 years. So includes projects that are smaller than they would normally include. It's a very big, ungodly list that we can't possibly fund in the first few years at the very least. What we're going to do differently this year is normally, the town manager would vet through those and get to a point that we put something in front of the Board of Selectmen for their final consideration. But at our meeting on February 20th, we are going to set aside time to publicly go through the capital list. Our goal is to pare it down so what stuff can stay on small cap? What is large enough or complicated enough that it has to go to a larger cap planning process? And perhaps a third list of what falls in between those two cracks that we need to put on a look-for-grant-funding source. So February 20th, we will do an announcement about this. We will push it out, so people are welcome to come. We're going to go through a public vetting of that. This is a little different than we talked about in our last meeting, right? Rather than use a workshop dedicated to that and think we're going to use our whole side. So then when we get to the workshops, we'll have our good vetting. You guys good with that?
Yes.
That's my only announcement. We'll go this way. Mark, do you have anything?
No, I don't have any slack in the report.
All right.
I have nothing this evening.
I have nothing.
Coming back to you. Fred?
Nothing for me.
All right, Ben.
All right. So the update from the high school on the, I'll just start on the sports front. So indoor track is having their state meet where every, the people who have qualified for states have, or will have a meet on Friday. Chaz, the other student liaison, missed tonight because he has his senior night for basketball. So hopefully, they did well. I'm sure they did. Hockey and wrestling are also in full swing, and school is in completely full swing. It's already the second semester. Midterms is thankfully over, so we're all past the exams. And then some other events in, I think, a week ago, we had the whole student body of the high school met together, and we had the Poetry Out Loud competition where everyone, the semifinalists got to go up on stage and present a poem for the whole school, which was a cool experience. That was like the first time the school was really together all in the auditorium once for the first time this year. And then the National Honor Society, in the future, they're focusing on making another volleyball tournament to raise funds, which was a successful event in the fall, which they're going to do again. And they're already starting work on the empty bowls event where they are, they create bowls and they have a soup dinner where to, again, provide, create more funds for more action for them. And then also, the student government is making a long-awaited dodgeball tournament for us to partake in very soon. So that is all that is happening at school.
Then I have two questions. Is there a date for empty bowls?
I don't know.
Will you make a note to, next time to report to us if you have a date?
Yep.
And second, is there any chance in the, be an old man's division in the dodgeball tournament?
I'll see if people outside the high school can get.
Any other questions, Ben? Thank you, Ben. All right. Next item on the agenda is a public session. Doesn't look like we have anybody on the room. Anybody in the room? Want to address us during a public session? All right. Seeing no one, we do not have a need for an executive session. But before we adjourn, here's what I would like to do with the celebration. I'm going to say just a couple of words. And, and then I would invite everyone to come up and say whatever you want. Come up and talk, say whatever you want in memory of Diane. It's really a celebration of her and her service to the town. And then we're just going to eat cookies and drink coffee and remember her. Good with everybody? All right. Need a motion to adjourn?
To adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 We are adjourned from the official part of the meeting.